Any more number of all these orders?
Yeah, the flag be, flag down, listen.
Oh, God, thank you. I'm glad to share it.
United States of America and to the Republic, what would you say? I don't know if you should, uh, this is a vote, a vote to keep them as well.
He brought in the all this time, thank you.
And we'll start with the public hearing.
Turn your, turn your mic on.
About that, there you go, so I can hear it. Public hearing, food truck, DBA Caribbean flavors and DBA Smokin' Dads BBQ. And any comments on the public hearing? Then I will close the public hearing. Approval of the agenda. Do you want to add something, Dan?
Yeah, um, so Keith and I attended the finance committee meeting.
Yep.
Um, on, on Thursday, last Thursday, so I'd like to give an update on that. And then either under other or business, I'd just like to have a discussion about.
Finance or facilities?
Facilities, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, and I wrote finance too.
Anything else?
Yeah, I'd just like to have a discussion, make sure everybody's on board with town meeting and its location.
Why don't we do that under public forum?
Well, it doesn't matter where.
Okay. Anything else for the agenda? Motion to approve? Second? Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor? And public forum? You wanted to do some talking about the room?
We, I just, I just wanted to see how, I'm concerned that we're gonna get more people than what this room is, this room's capacity. So I just, I know it's getting late, but if, if something happens and we get 150 people that show up, what are we gonna do?
Well, we have 112 chairs, I'm gonna put them all out. I began a conversation with both the code officer and the fire chief today, just to see what kind of wiggle room, particularly with the fire chief, in terms of capacity and so on and so forth. I think with 112 chairs, I may not have much room for standing room. But I will not know until after I get them all up. And if we have 112 plus show up, that would be the largest town meeting we've had since, as I said earlier, since our, our bond, um, special town meeting vote on the municipal bond for the, for this building, which was 142 that day. So, um.
We haven't had anything as controversial as this since that time.
I, I, you know, I understand that people think it's controversial, but it's, for me, for me, we can talk about simple up-down vote, either discontinue it or you don't. I mean, I know everybody has their own passions about, um, what, what's happening there, and I, I don't know how we, how we get that message out, that if you, you're opposed to it, just vote no. And, you know, um, but as you know, passions are running high in reference to that matter, and it may not, um, it may not be advantageous to that. The, the thing we did talk about, um, and, and I know this is human nature, obviously after a very controversial vote, uh, we saw it last year when we changed the months, one additional month for the cottages, we had a bunch of people here for that. Once that vote was taken, there was a mass exodus of folks that were leaving because they had taken the vote they wanted. I'm not sure if we should think about moving Article 25 and 26. I think they're, those are the articles up to beginning, and hopefully maybe talk to Greg M., the moderator, about perhaps accomplishing that and getting that issue done. I think you may see a lot of people vacate as a result of that, and that may, for them, it may be an advantage, I'm not sure. But, um, I'm really reluctant, I, I would like to give it a shot here, but I know what Dan, how Dan feels in reference that it may or may not, um, be over capacity, and I think at that point, um, I, I'm trying to think, I think the moderator has control of that at that point. He may be asking some questions as to, you know, what we're gonna do, but, um, never had that happen, I've never had it experienced, so.
What would be the alternative, Dan, at this point?
Well, we could've gotten, maybe the school, gotten a gym.
I'd say, at this point, we, we don't have an alternative.
I, I.
Well, the notices go out saying it's here.
Don't see why we can't, if, if we were able to get the school, we could certainly get the word out that it's at the school.
I don't, I, I think it'd create more confusion, because people would show up here, show up there.
They just, what avoids my concern, because if we have 150 people show up, what do we do?
I think Keith's suggestion is the one I would've made, and that we move the questions.
Shh, and, and that's great, and I think no matter what we do that, even if 10 people show up, yet, but still, you got 150 people, what do we do? Even though it's, it's first article and second article.
Pack them in here.
If we're okay with that.
Cheek to jaw.
Yeah.
Pack them in, and while they're at that, some for money to do the expansion.
I'm all for that. Hey, can we expand them? We have room to expand them.
That one, yeah. You gotta go that way.
Yeah.
There wouldn't be a lot, yeah. Anyway, I just, I wanted to, I, you know, I see signs all over the place, and I'm just, I'm just concerned that we're gonna get a lot of people.
Around the wall. We had to.
Just gonna try it.
Yeah.
Pack them in like sardines and.
Yeah. And make sure that you don't have an empty seat over here, and an empty seat over here, and another empty seat up there, but you have people standing over there. Make them take a seat.
Yeah, we're just gonna have to, you know, if it, if it gets like that, we'll just have to maybe take a little time and make sure people get in and.
And get seated.
Get heard. The other thing I was thinking of is if we had great weather, we open the doors, obviously we, we'll probably have the doors open anyways, and then have people be able to, at least here, and communicate perhaps, and then they can come in if they had to, but I don't, really don't want to do that, I'd like to have them in the building if possible, so. Never run into it before.
Doesn't mean it can't happen.
Yeah, I, I'm with you. I'm with you.
Okay.
Move approval as submitted.
All second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the minutes, all in favor? Okay. And committee and board reports, the facilities committee meeting that you attended.
All right, so, um, Keith and I attended the facilities meeting on, on last Thursday. Really, the intent was to have a discussion about the MOU, but I'll go over, you know, I took notes of the facilities committee meeting anyway, so I'll just kind of go over some of that. He talked about that the irrigation system at the high school is failing. There's a, a point that keeps drying up, so they're working on trying to fix that. I got a bunch of painting projects that are completed. June 18th is the lacrosse finals and graduation, as most of you probably know, was last Sunday. They finally got a nice, beautiful day for that. Richard talked about, uh, doing some soundproofing at the Sea Road School. I talked about playground replacement parts over at KCS, and at Mildred L-Day, there are some floors and classrooms that need to be replaced. Then, uh, they're, they're trying to put together an environmental subcommittee for the three towns, they're talking about energy efficiency, you know, use of renewable energy, you know, Kennebunk is working on some initiatives for solar energy. Another thing that wasn't brought up at the meeting, but I was talking with Richard Toronto Smith before the meeting, and I asked about the generator for ML Day, and they're still working that grant, but because of the way that the building is powered, they now have to, they really have to go after two generators, because power comes in from two different spots. One end powers all of the, the, um, um, the, the fire suppression system, so obviously they need to have that, and then the other end powers, you know, some other things. So they're still working that issue to try to get grants and get that going. Then under new business, uh, he talked about all the random testing was complete for all the schools, and everything was all negative, looking good. Talked about the grounds crews, especially around the high school, how that's looking good, they're just doing amazing job, and we keeps getting comments from, uh, visiting teams on just how really nice the facilities is, so they're doing a pretty good job over there. So the gist of the meeting for Keith and I were to discuss the MOU, and, um, I, you know, you, I believe you've all, did you send this, this letter to all select board members, right, that you had put together?
I believe I did, yeah.
So I kind of reread this letter that Keith had put together, the same letter that I read at the May 19th meeting, um, and, and kind of discussing the, the history of, of how the parks and rec, or how the rec department was with the school, so kind of talked a little about, a little bit about that. A bunch of questions from, uh, you know, some different folks. Kennebunk, Kennebunk Port, they're trying to tie on a little bit, um, and I think some of the school board members, um, although this is a separate item, they're, they're looking at if there are any other, this type of scenario where there was a verbal agreements and what have you, they kind of want to put all of that stuff in writing. You know, they're gonna look at it, it's gonna go back to the board, they may make some changes to that and come back to us. There were comments about, you know, would we be open to, um, you know, if something happens and they had to use the space, move the rec department, hey, move the rec office, and, you know, I just said, basically, give us something to look at, you know? When we walked out, Keith and I were talking, and Keith had mentioned, you know, one of the reasons that, that it's there, where it is, is there was a discussion about, hey, let's, let's keep it away from the main entrance, let's get it close to the school. So I did send a letter to the school board, the whole school board stating that fact, that, you know, the reason it is where it is, there was a lot of thought given about it, keeping it there, so they wouldn't use the main entrance, and that it's close to the gym, because that's pretty much where everything else is used, where, where the rec uses, so. I don't know, if you want to add anything else, Keith, uh?
No, the only thing that I gleaned from it, obviously, um, my position was that I really wanted to see some sort of up and down vote by the school board as a whole, seeing that this elective board had made a decision and voted to send them an MOU for consideration. Their thought was that they want to, they want to come back to this board with a modification to the MOU that they feel would be appropriate. So, um, I said, you know, we're, we're available to listen to whatever they have. And as I said to them, the other thing that I wanted to press upon them is that if they hold another meeting to discuss those issues, that we've sent that MOU, that we appreciate being contacted. And, um, I made that abundantly clear as well, so hopefully that message got across to the chairman, um, and that our participation moving forward will be, um, will be involved in it.
Yeah, and I will certainly keep an eye on the agenda. So when they had a discussion on this on the May 19th meeting, um, I had planned on attending, although I didn't read the agenda, I had planned on attending, but, you know, I was, I was sick, I was out of work that Friday, I was sick the whole weekend, I didn't go to work Monday, I didn't go to work on, I went to work later on Tuesday, so I didn't go to the meeting and didn't even pay attention to the agenda. Had I looked at the agenda, at least I would've called Dan remotely and said, kind of give, given the, you know, the history, but I'll just keep a real close eye on the agenda when it comes out, just to make sure that we're aware it's coming, and then we can, you know, react accordingly.
Thank you. And the managers report.
Uh, you just, uh, just some information to share with you, obviously, um, we have discovered, and thank you, um, for the chairman to pointing out that some of the numbers that were on the warrant that was signed were, were left off. Article one and two identified in paragraph one wasn't there, and then article, and then paragraph two should've had Article three through 38. So I immediately contacted our attorney to see if that had any detriment to the warrant. She spoke to the moderator, Greg M., um, and Leah got back to me and said that it, in their view, it does not make any changes in the warrant, per se, for people that they have to vote. Greg did say that he will acknowledge that there was, those numbers aren't there, and so people understand that we're aware of it, and that a decision was made to continue to move forward, so, um, that's about it, and I apologize for, for leaving those off. I should've double-checked it again before you signed it. Terms of the assessor's position, um, the status, there's still up in the air in terms of having an assessor. One of the candidates that I was hoping, um, that may take our position has indicated to me that, uh, she's gonna stay where she is, so, um, unfortunate for us. There isn't many assessors, independent assessors, that are still out there that are willing to come in and take on, you know, a community of our size at this point. So what I've done is I've, I've started reaching out to those companies that provide contract assessing services for a temporary basis until perhaps we find somebody that can, that wishes to take our, our position. As soon as I know, I'll let you know, I know that, um, uh, one of the candidates that has turned, turned the job down, said that she would volunteer to help if she, if we needed her, and then resident Joe Mary, who is a assessor for the town of Standish, Maine, has indicated that he would come and lend a hand if we get into a tight spot, so, um, we've got some options moving forward at the end of the year. I did speak to the assessor today, indicating to find out where we are in terms of her review of the data. One of the sticking points that we're seeing are for the, um, single, not double-wide mobile homes, but single-wide mobile homes. She felt that based on the, um, the information that she'd seen, that that may be skewed a little bit, and so she's looking into perhaps doing some adjustments to the, to the, um, tables, uh, relative to those, uh, to those properties. We're seeing that any indicated, she's indicated to me that anything that, uh, she's looking at, um, if it was a $250,000 home, it looks like it's gonna be closer to $500,000. So people need to be aware of that, obviously, um, that we're seeing that. We're not going to, we all, the other thing we did, um, talked about today is, um, not trying to get to the level of 100%, but be in the 95 to 97 percentile on values, because they're, they're fluctuating, and we felt that that was a better, a better place to be, as opposed to, uh, you know, trying to get to 100. Table's almost done, the commercial real estate, I think they're looking at, uh, fine-tuning some pieces to that. The April 1st pickups that, uh, with name changes and stuff, she's adding that information in. So it won't be long now that notices will be going out to, uh, to residents, and I believe that's part of Vision's contract, they'll send notices out with a new value and give people the opportunity to come in and talk to them about it. So, um, I'm sure that at the annual town meeting, we may get some questions on what's going on. My quick analysis based on if, if the school budget passes, the town's budget passes, and the, uh, and the, um, county budget is approved, obviously, uh, we're probably, and with a, with a increase in value, uh, I'm thinking that we're gonna be somewhere in the, um, 1050 to 1120 per thousand mark, um, as opposed to $17,000, the thousand that we are right now. So that's just a preliminary review, and we don't know what our final number is. I used, again, as I told you in the budget meeting, I used the, uh, the state valuation of 872 million, uh, 74,500,000 at this point, so that's what they think is 100% for us, but we'll see how the numbers come in. I'm still curious to see them as well, but, um, we're getting along with that.
Do you have any idea, Keith, on, let's say we weren't going through the evaluations, where we would be, or at 1710 now, where you think we would be?
Well, it would depend on where, what the assessor picked up, and what kind of new value that we had. Generally, as you well know, we were picking up anywhere between 15 and 20 million dollars worth of value, so there could be a change there. I would say we'd probably be closer to the $18 range, um, if, if we didn't do the update. That's just me, I can probably do some crunch those numbers a little bit more, but, um, not quite sure we wanna, we wanna do that. So anyways, um, you know, I've experienced this as well, um, in my own personal, my own real estate property, obviously in another town, but the real estate was done and the values come in, and I mean, if people are honest with themselves when they look at the value, um, they have to say to themselves, you know, what would I sell my property for? And I know for folks that have been around a long time and their property hasn't sold, um, they get, they get frustrated when those prices continue to rise, but, um, I think it's just the, the area that we're living in unfortunately, and the services that we're
So when the question is asked, is how the, what's the mill rate based upon the budget this year, what are we gonna tell them? We don't know at this point.
Yeah, um, we'd have to say it's still up in the air.
Yeah, really.
We don't know until we get the new value, um, you know, uh, we can make some speculations, but we really don't know.
Yeah, we never, we never usually do anyways, the town meeting, right?
Well, we usually have some idea.
Right.
Somebody always asks, we ain't talking about it, and we.
Right, I mean, I mean, we can make, we can make some assumptions, but they're just assumptions until we get that value.
Now we gotta really let them know that there's really assumptions involved.
Correct, correct, we don't know what that value is yet. Yeah. And that, obviously, you've been around long enough, that frustrates people when they, when you can't give them a definitive answer, but we can't this year until we get that Moving on with the public works positions, I've had, I've had seven, eight people that have signed up, I've, uh, was earmarking, uh, three interviews today, uh, they all, they, nobody contacted me, I scheduled the interviews, they never showed up. And I have three more tomorrow, I think I have three more tomorrow, and then I have, I think, one on, um, uh, one on Wednesday as well. So we'll see if these others bring us to fruition as to, maybe we have some candidates, uh, moving forward, but we'll keep plugging along. That's all I have under my report.
Okay. Then under business, application for the mass gathering permit?
Yes, I think I gave you a copy, I have the original here, but, um, uh, Rundle Conservation Trust is looking for approval for their, um, for their fundraiser, the Trail Fest fundraiser run, uh, event that they put on September 20th, uh, they're looking at 7 to 2 PM. This is traditionally what they've done in the past, and they're seeking your approval once again.
Yeah, I make a motion that we, we approve, uh, their mass gathering permit, and also that we waive the fee.
Right.
All second.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor? Okay.
I'll send it on down, it's, it's marked for signatures.
Brady, thank you.
How do I have two of these?
Yeah, I have two. All right, application for food truck, the Caribbean flavors.
Yes, uh, again, this is at Vinegar Hill, this one's scheduled for June 28th, uh, they would be the only truck on site for that day, and they're seeking approval. There is no signatures necessary, just a, a vote, um, a majority vote would, uh, would carry the day.
Is this the list of, um, that you put, the second sheet that you gave us, is this the list of what's at Vinegar Hill for each of those events?
The, these are the tentative, these are the tentative agreements, yes, um, that we know at this point.
I make a motion, we approve the, um, the Caribbean favors, or flavors, over at Vinegar Hill.
Motion's been made, do we have a second?
For June, for June 28th.
Yeah, and that's seconded by Phil. All right, all in favor? All right, takes care of that one. And how about the food truck, Smokin' Dads BBQ?
Yeah, Smokin' Dads BBQ, um, I purposely, originally on your, um, on your agenda, did not have this one on there, we added it, um, late in the process, simply because they paid for the $250 seasonal pass, but they've only provided one day at this point that they will be on site, so they will have to come back for other dates, um, that they'll be seeking there, but, um, right now they're scheduled for, uh, let me see. I know I have it.
Yeah.
They're, they're scheduled for, uh, June 15th, which would be, um, sometime this
You'd think they would send it for all their dates. Maybe they didn't know what all their dates were.
I don't believe they know all their dates yet, but they've, they've filled it out for the year, so I'm not quite sure how you want to administer that if you give approvals. The only thing that I would look at on the application moving forward was to ensure that there're not more than two on site at Vinegar Hill at any, any given time, based on the approvals that have been granted.
I make a motion, we approve Smokin' Dads BBQ at Vinegar Hill for 6:15 date.
All second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded for Smokin' Dads BBQ, all in favor? All right, takes care of Smokin' Dads.
Next you have a, um, request for abatement of personal property from the, um, from Kayla Perkins here in the office, she's provided the, the details of each event. I think there are, there's one for Nicholas Smith, that owes a total of 48104. What I understand, it was a, must've been a trailer at Hemlock Grove. We have one for Tim Karen, the same type of situation where they were at Hemlock Grove and she's tried on numerous occasions to try to get contact with these folks, to no avail. And I believe that one is for $1,340.47. And finally, um, in the attempt to wrap up whatever personal property was remaining on Holly's, if you recall, I think dating back to when Simone was here, we were trying to wrap some of this personal property abatement up and she's tried again to no avail. So we're seeking, um, to abate $6,208.40. I would assume they do want to take a vote on each individual one as we move through?
So even though the total on here says 85, 96, 75, it's Wayne's Ferrannato has been taken care of, so it's only 8,029.91?
Whatever those totals are too, I would, um.
Where did you say that? In your business note that you sent us? 8,029.91?
I, I saw that, but in my business note to you?
Right here.
Oh yeah, it is. Okay, yep, you're right.
Okay.
So I don't know how, how, how you want to do them, I would assume we probably have to do them individually.
So in a case of the ones that are at, you said this, this first one was at Walnut?
Hemlock Grove.
Hemlock Grove. The, the owners of Hemlock Grove can't get in touch with these people either? I mean, do they leave their mobile, their units right there?
Um, I don't believe they do.
They take them home and register them?
Right, there's a, there's a, um, there's an email that Hemlock Grove has sent to Kayla, it's attached to the document, indicating that I have the same address of all three. Tim Karen has not been a seasonal here since 2021 and Nicholas Smith has not been a seasonal since 2017. So whatever addresses she provided, I've, Kayla notes that I've sent notices to every available address and sent an email to the campground. Her response is in the packet as referenced.
Yeah.
So you have her efforts to try to secure these uncollectibles at this point.
Okay. Gentlemen, how would you like to handle this?
Unless I just did my math wrong, I came up with 79, 84, 93, but I was kind of, I was kind of going through this quick.
Well, you, you have, for Nicholas Smith, you have 48104. For Tim Karen, you have $1,340.47. And for, um, Holly's, you have $6,208.40. So whatever that totals up to.
Was that 6,000 what?
$6,208.40.
Oops, oops, sorry, 6,208, how many cents?
Forty.
And then what was the total for Karen?
For Karen, it was, um, $1,340.47.
And then Nicholas was 48104?
Correct.
Yeah, it's 8,029.91.
Yeah, okay.
So is Holly's like completely out of business? They don't, they're not even in sock or anything anymore?
I don't, you know, we've made numerous efforts to try to secure that, to no avail.
Weren't they the ones that they had, it was quite a bit a few years ago?
Right, I think they were, I think it had to do with real estate.
Yeah, were able to get some of that?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I, I, I mean, to expedite things here, I'd entertain a motion in a second to provide an abate, um, a baiting for uncollectible taxes for Nicholas Smith of $481.04.
Hold on.
Okay, motion's been made, do we have a second?
I'll second.
And second, all in favor? All right, takes care of Nicholas Smith.
The next one is Tim Karen for $1,340.47.
I'll move for that abatement.
Yep, motions are made, do we have a second? Okay, Phil seconded that. All right, all in favor? That takes care of Tim Karen.
And finally, um, uh, $6,208.40 for Holly's.
I'm moved.
Yep. Dan made that a motion, do we have a second? Yep, seconded by Tom. All in favor? All right, takes care of those.
Thank you.
Do we each have two of these for a reason?
There was probably, um, no, you shouldn't have two for a reason.
Dan, you said we should only have one.
You should only have one.
Dan has, also has two.
That one's no good.
Oh, which one is no good?
That one's no good, let me see that one you got. What's, what's the date that you have amended?
Uh, June 15th for 2022? Okay. Got it. Yep, you're all set.
Yep.
Okay. And the payables and payroll warrant.
Make a motion, we approve payable and payroll.
And motion made by Dan, seconded by Phil. All in favor? Okay. Any other business?
I mean, I just want to make sure that, I know it was brought up at the last town meeting, but, um, I did talk to Keith, I just want to make sure that we have York County Sheriff's yearly report out for residents. I know there were some residents at the last town meeting that said, hey, how come we don't get this anymore? I think we should make it available for residents if they want.
Yeah, I believe we got, we got the copy from the chief deputy. I don't know if I circulated it to you guys via email, but I'll have copies at the meeting. We'll put them out as handouts, um, on the table so folks can have that they so desire. I think, you know, we spoke last time, I think there were over 2,500 calls for service by the sheriff's department here in Arundel.
Are they going, is one of them going to be available at a town meeting?
I suppose I can reach out if you need them to be here.
I don't think we need them.
I don't, I don't think so. Yeah, sometimes, you know, they'll show up. Yeah, though.
No room.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, us, well, us non-voters may have to leave the room.
Any other business?
Motion to adjourn at 7:38 PM.
And we have a motion made and a second, you have that?
Got it.
All in favor?
Thank you.